Are we doing that?
I did that thing. I just saw this in the calendar for 20.
Well, no, yeah, yeah, no, I know.
I knew it was second. Yeah, second two. But you at the end of it. April.
Well, it's not on the agenda. Not sure that's going to happen. I think they'll make.
I especially know the average.
I think there's less. Yeah. You may have taken up with the mayor and I would like to.
Not related to the other meeting.
No, like related to.
Oh, should I? We don't really have a.
Kind of.
Okay.
That's good.
Right.
So what they just.
Oh, good.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Notice of an open work session of the City Council of the City of North Kansas City, Missouri, June 18th, 2019. Mr. Eric.
Thanks, sir. Tonight's work session is on the subject of economic development in North Kansas City. This is something that Councilmember Smith asked us to place on a work session agenda. We last had a general discussion of our economic development effort in 2016. And so as we were working on sort of putting together a report to the City Council for this work session, we thought it would be useful to provide you some general information about what's occurring in terms of economic development here in North Kansas City and the city's role in it, as well as that of some of our partners in the effort. So we have put together some information and like to go ahead and provide that overview to you, and then we'd be happy to take any questions and input that you might have. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to the Assistant City Administrator, Kim Nakahoko, to present that overview.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You were provided with a memo in advance of this meeting. One of them's a memo, and I'll speak on that this evening, but you also received two additional attachments. One of them is the memo that was discussed in 2016, and another one is an economic development brief, of which I'll kind of walk through. If at any time you have any questions, please feel free to stop me, and I can elaborate as to maybe how we got some of these numbers. So in 2016, the City Council did host a work session on economic development efforts in North Kansas City. There were several options presented to the governing body at that time, which included forming an economic development corporation, adding a staff person, or contracting for economic development services. At the conclusion of that work session, the City Council indicated that they were satisfied with this current city efforts and development structure at that time. Since 2016, the city has made pretty good strides in accomplishing many of the items that were outlined in the master plan. Some of that includes One North Development Master Agreement. Oop, borrowed my own slide here. Economic development, the city did craft and the governing body did adopt an economic development incentive policy, and that's what guides our decisions as we're contemplating those with developers. The zoning ordinance update, which we've had several conversations with you on, and that is currently in development and will come forward to you on July 2nd. Adoption of the parking master plan, parking management plan, and the Burlington Corridor Complete Street Plan, which is currently in the implementation and design phase. In 2018, the City Council, along with city staff, participated in a strategic planning session over a few days, and from that plan, economic development was again a large subject matter, and several items were identified within that plan, and we report quarterly on how we are implementing and moving through those strategic plans. Economic development can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people. It's kind of like asking somebody, what's your favorite color? And if they say blue, there's a lot of blues that that could be. So in an effort to kind of build a base of where we are within economic development efforts here in North Kansas City, I'm going to switch now to that brief that was attached on your memo. Here are some just demographic information on North Kansas City, our estimated 2018 population. A lot of this information comes to us from the U.S. Census Bureau. We are 25% residential, 75% commercial industrial. We're fully landlocked, fully developed, and really all development in North Kansas City is going to be redevelopment. Our median age is 36, and our median household income is a little over $42,000. We are very unique in that our daytime population is much larger than our resident base, and according to the U.S. Census Bureau, we have 925 companies that call North Kansas City home. That lower number of 1.4 unemployment rate is pretty remarkable. Those are our latest numbers that are being reported out, and these are all the numbers that you're seeing here are in June numbers, so that was our June base. We have 2807, 2,807 housing units, and we have almost the same split of residential to commercial as we do to homeownership and home rental. This is some business information, our business licenses. As you can see, they kind of move north and south depending on our 1C contractors. Any business that is doing business within North Kansas City is required to get a business license, even if they are not located within North Kansas City. And the reason why we want to do that is to make sure that businesses that are operating here have all of their insurance, as well as all their state accreditations, to do business safely. Our fixed fees specialized, those numbers are going down just a bit, but our fixed fee general is around the same. And I'm going to kind of put a giant asterisk in there, two asterisks. Right now, we have 114 businesses that are currently going through our process, so their numbers are not reflected in this table because they have not received their completed business license yet, but they're kind of in the pipeline. They're going through the process. Another thing is, is a lot of businesses are precluded from having a state business, or having a business license at the local level. A lot of those are those professional services, banking, hospital, pretty much anything that's licensed at the local level cannot be licensed at, or at the state level cannot be licensed at the local level. So as professions have changed within North Kansas City, we kind of lose at the local level to have a good understanding of how many of those businesses are located here. I hate to say it, so there is a little bit of magic to the math in the fact that we do rely on some of that census information, because they're pulling off of federal information versus the numbers that you're seeing here are being pulled off of our local licensing information.
Just on that real quick, can we not pull any numbers from the state on licenses located within North Kansas City, those businesses?
I would like to say that we have a great information sharing system with the state.
Yeah.
We do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you guys have any other further questions about that particular area? I'll kind of move on to commercial property here. We have 740 commercial and industrial parcels. That does not mean buildings. It means individual parcels that are registered with the county. We did do a vacancy report on June 7th, and at that time, we had 38 properties or office spaces for lease. Now, that could be one building, could be one office, or it could be the entire building. And at that time, we had 16 commercial properties for sale. We have seen an uptick in commercial properties for sale in the last month. Some of that is some longstanding businesses have come onto the market, but we're also seeing some opportunity zone sales coming onto the market. There is a limited time window where investors can really optimize that ability to defer capital investment, capital taxes, and we are seeing some business owners decide to kind of put their toe out there and see if somebody would buy their building. North Kansas City, we are very different in that there is little opportunity for new development, and a lot of that is because we're fully developed. Again, going back to it, but any development's redevelopment in North Kansas City. Very little commercial property is for sale. Most properties commercially in North Kansas City are available for lease. And over the last five years, there's been little to no new commercial property, office style buildings that have come online. There is some pros and cons to having a community that businesses can lease versus purchase, and there's also some deltas. The pro is that it allows businesses to operate without an initial startup fee, meaning that there's very little barrier to entry. Businesses can lease a facility that meets their current needs right now without having to look at, is this my home for the next five to 10 years? One of the deltas on that is it can also limit our ability to market in North Kansas City to new businesses that are only interested in owner occupying. So that is something that, I'll be honest, is a little unique to North Kansas City. Again, there are pros and cons to that. We are seen as a great place to do business if you're an entrepreneur and don't have a lot of startup capital, but if you're a larger established company that is really only interested in owner occupying so that you can use the money that's within that to perhaps bond against, we're not as attractive for that particular reason. As you know, we have talked about residential property, and that was something that came out during the strategic planning session. We have 2,807 housing units, and when we did our vacancy report back in June, there was five homes for sale. As you guys are hyper aware, as soon as a home goes available for sale, it's almost sold just as quickly. Very infrequently do any of us drive by a for-sale sign in a yard and drive back a couple of days later, and it's still there. It's fantastic. It's a super hot market, but it also can be a little bit frustrating for homeowners that are looking to locate in North Kansas City. And as Sarah kind of chatted with you earlier this year about our home rental rate and our ability to afford, our ability to provide affordable housing in North Kansas City, we seem to be doing fairly well in that market.
This number of housing units, does that include like the apartments? Actually, the individual houses, how many do we have?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head, but we could look that number up for you and give you a number on that.
I used to know, too.
Yeah, for this, we didn't break it down, so I couldn't tell you off the top of my
head. Do you have a number with the new count of housing units will be once all the potential developments are completed with the One North, the apartments at Eighteenth and Swift? Do we know what that number's going to be?
Well, One North is 240 units. Eighteenth and Swift is still up in the air a little bit, but they're a minimum of 150.
Right. What about the super block potential? Do we have any idea?
Couldn't guess. That is, you know, there's a huge range that could possibly go in there. But I would say our, what's in the pipeline right now? I'd say we're looking at about 400, just with those two projects. 1007 Armor, where we have the purchase option agreement, they were looking at 60, 48 to 60 units. Is there another one? So, yeah, we have some, and then the super block, obviously, there's a big opportunity there.
We thought we'd kind of talk about construction permits and what they have looked like over the last several years. As you can see, there's been a trend line with total permit valuation, and we did kind of put an asterisk in there because you do see, especially in that dollar amount, you see the reflection of the Cerner's KC experience, the North Kansas City Hospital, One North Development. Did you want to talk about the fact that that's probably not? I'm going to have Sarah chat on the fact that even though we've really enjoyed this upward trend.
Yeah, so if you, if you look at permit, the valuation really tells you how big a particular job is. The bigger valuation, you know, the bigger job. So we were thrilled in 2017 when we looked at that number and thought, wow, we broke 100,000, because, you know, 2016 was a great year for us, and this will not continue. We know that we will revert to mean sometime here over the next couple of years. Frankly, we were surprised that 2018 was as big a year as it was, and it's because we've got a lot of new construction happening now, particularly with One North. So this will not continue, and when we see that start to drop off, that's not a cause for alarm. It's us reverting to mean. Now, if it, if we got back to, you know, 20, you don't see it on this chart, but 2010, 2011 were also low years for us. If we got back down to that level, I might be a little concerned. But, you know, when this starts to curve back down, please don't panic.
Another way to kind of gauge economic development is through our tax base. So this is actually from the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that is reported to on an annual basis. You can see, this is the last 10-year snapshot. So you can see, although it's not dynamic growth, there is growth over the last 10 years through property tax increase, sales tax increase, and smaller ones in assessed values. We have not gotten this coming year's assessed values, so we're unsure what those will look like. You know, you guys have seen as many news reports on that as we have, that the assessed values are going up. So, but we have not received those numbers just yet. We are anxiously awaiting them, I think, like everybody else is. I'm actually going to pivot this over. So another way that, you know, you kind of look at economic development, job growth. Traditionally, economic development is seen as job growth. Again, North Kansas City, we're a little bit different in the fact that we have that. We are seen as a job base, as an economic driver of industry in the region. So this right here is a stagnant map that was provided to, that just kind of shows inflow, stay and outflow. Again, this information is provided to us by the U.S. Census Bureau, and I am actually going to pivot this over.
What do you mean by stay? Is that people that stay in town, or?
They are, they live and work within the same community.
Okay.
While Bradley is pulling this up, I'll introduce Bradley Hookever is our planning intern who just started with us last month, and here he is, appearing in front of council already, so.
So when Kim asked me to look into some sort of visual way to represent some economic development, and I immediately went to this website. It's a site that uses government census data, and it visually shows, in this map in particular, where people work. So as you can see, as the time ticks by, that even through the recession where we are right now, it seems to be pretty steady. Obviously, some of the largest activity is taking place towards the hospital in Cerner, and as well as the Paseo Industrial Complex. So.
Do you only have this through 2014?
So this goes from 2002 to 2015.
Okay.
And I imagine soon they'll have an update on this. Yeah.
Thank you. So the next thing we'll talk about is kind of some buy the numbers. I love good numbers. I think that they are a fast way to kind of paint a story. So these numbers are from January. So they begin, these are 2019 numbers. So we have had 28 opportunity zone inquiries, meaning that these are either investment or individual businesses that have called City Hall to ask, hey, did we know about opportunity zone? Do we have any available properties since North Kansas City is an opportunity zone? And it's safe to say that we have had a good amount of inquiries. Again, kind of tabling back some of the challenges, and we'll kind of get into this. Before the April release, there were a lot more questions about opportunity zones than we really had answers for them. They were, they knew one thing, buy the property. So that was, now again, the April release of information gave us some clarity on that. It doesn't have to be a purchase of property, that there can be a direct infusion of funding directly into the business, whether they own property or not. And that really came by because a lot of people were clamoring for clarification. Again, the first blush of information was great, but again, it didn't give a lot of actionable information for those who maybe are a little bit more timid in their investment portfolios.
Kim, can you remind the council just very briefly about what an opportunity zone is?
Absolutely. An opportunity zone is a designation. Really, it is a program by, it's a, it's part of the tax reform effort that was voted in two years ago. It is a partnership program between the IRS and the Treasury Department, and really what it is, is it's a benefit. It's not really a program, although sometimes we call it a program, and that's just so people can relate and understand what in the world it is. But then they tell us, it's not a program, it's a benefit, stop calling it that. Really what it is, is it's a capital gains benefit. It's a way to direct investment into what can be considered an underserved or an overlooked community. Investors come in and any, you can take capital gains, it's a deferment. So you can take capital gains money, you can invest it into a project within an opportunity zone, and then you can actually double down on that, meaning that any money that you incur or make off of that investment, you can reinvest it into an opportunity zone, and you can defer all the capital gains tax that you would have paid on your initial investment, any growth there from within. So again, more clarity. They tell us that another opportunity for us to better understand how this program functions will come later on this year. There was a very large release of information in April. Staff has attended several sessions on trying to understand the challenges that we're all trying to understand this information all at once. I liken it to you're trying to captain a ship while you're building it at the same time. It's very much so what we're doing with this program. The challenge is, is it does have hard stop clocks in it, and during the government shutdown, we lost a lot of time in understanding that release of information. It was due out in February. It didn't come out until April due to the government shutdown, but they didn't move the backdrop. They didn't move a couple of these dates that are already set in stone to accommodate for that loss of time. So there is a little bit of anxiousness in the market to better understand so that those, so that the maximum amount of money saved can be realized within the stringent timeframe that they have given.
Do you know what those timelines are? Because last I heard, if they didn't have their investments organized by something like October of this year, then the loss.
It's by the end of the year. That you start dropping down in percentage.
You don't have as much to gain by.
Correct, correct. So I'll be very interested to see how properties move within North Kansas City, knowing that that backstop is there. I do think it is giving property owners a little bit of leverage to negotiate that price point, knowing that there is a finite amount of real estate in the market and only, and also a finite amount of time. So it'll be very interesting to see. I do see some aggressive pricing out there within North Kansas City, and I think a lot of it has to do with that stop clock has started, and there's not any more time coming onto it.
Another question on that, we wouldn't necessarily even know if any of this investment's occurring, right?
They do not have to do anything at the local county or state, no. They would tell us, perhaps that would be their prerogative to tell us, but they have no reason to talk to us at all whether or not those deals are happening within North Kansas City.
From my understanding, the benefit, they would have to establish an opportunity fund that would then direct that. So wouldn't we be able to see if an organization bought property or started a business, that fund would be the buyer or the direction?
A lot of times, it's being used in a larger capital stack.
Okay.
And we don't, with private transactions, we don't see the financing. Now, we would if it was a city project, absolutely, but if it was a private buyer to private seller, we would not see that. Businesses can also self stand up a fund without any interaction at all with us at the local level, meaning that if I, you know, wanted to set aside an X amount of dollars and then use that same fund into a private transaction, I just don't have any kind of mechanism that would alert me to that. Again, unless that they maybe wanted to tout that, which I would encourage if anybody is doing that out there, to please let us know. I would certainly love to have some better metrics, but unless it was a project that the city was personally involved in, we wouldn't see that transaction. I'm hoping that the Treasury Department would publish that, at least at the state level, so that we could maybe get a better understanding. But again, that would be their prerogative to share that information with us. We are working at the staff level right now with three potential attractions, eight prospective new construction projects, three potential expansions, two business retentions. We have three redevelopment areas within North Kansas City, two complete street projects, and one bicycle master plan in development. So those are kind of our buy the numbers. Again, I kind of lean to our CAFER to kind of give an understanding over a certain timeline of where we are. So within, this was in the last CAFER that was presented a couple of months ago to the City Council. This is a 10-year snapshot, and you can definitely see where the industry in North Kansas City is moving. And this is something that when I chatted with you a couple of weeks ago, we talked about how the entertainment, restaurant, and tavern industry is growing within North Kansas City, and you can see those numbers here. You can also see that medical services and products continues to be something that businesses are locating within North Kansas City to do, computer equipment, software systems, but you're also seeing some of those traits are on the decline, and that's reflective of nationwide decline. It's not just something that's here within North Kansas City. So now I'll kind of pivot to some of the things that we have done at the staff level for economic development efforts. Here within North Kansas City, it is actually a team effort. It is the city administrator, the assistant city administrator, the community development director, and the city's counselor. We meet weekly. We are, we are the development team for North Kansas City, and we discuss new businesses that might have shown an interest of coming to North Kansas City. We work quite a bit on some of the city-led redevelopment projects that I'll kind of go into in a minute here. We also look at if there are any barriers that any of our current businesses are encountering and may have come to us. What do they look like? What is the challenge, and what can we do to remove that barrier so that they can proceed with their business? We are guided by our master plan, as well as the strategic plan that was developed, and any and all interactions that we may chat with potential developers and businesses. So we do have several city-led redevelopment projects. The One North is probably the one that is probably most visible, and that's because it's actively being constructed right now. The Burger King, Aloft, and Elements, the Old Chicago, and the Backyard Apartments are currently under construction, and we meet weekly with the developer to talk about the other attractions that are coming to the other parcels within that development. Another area that you are probably very familiar with is the North Gate Village. We chatted a little bit about the super block. Progress had stalled on that development, and we are working right now with the developers to craft wind-up agreements so that we can actively solicit RFPs on that super block and the remaining commercial properties right off of Burlington.
Do we have any idea on the timeframe at this point, or is it too early to say?
We hope to come to the council with something this summer.
Okay. I'm just thinking with the ticking clock for the opportunity zone, if we get something in before that, we get a lot more proposals, I'd imagine, with as much cost as that's going to be.
Absolutely. There are also some, because we are an opportunity zone, there has been a couple of partner federal programs that have been released for multifamily developments. They are really wanting to encourage multifamily developments within opportunity zones, and I agree, time is of the essence.
One more on timing. Eighteenth and Swift, do we have an actual time for when we can start seeing construction on that?
When we, when you first approved the development agreement for that, the developer was hoping to break ground this late fall. Pretty aggressive timeframe. I'm thinking, they had some delays in working through some approvals that were outside the city, and so I think that might be not so realistic at this point, but they're still working towards that. We don't have a firmer schedule for you quite yet.
Okay. Thank you.
So kind of mentioned Eighteenth and Swift and 1007 Armor, and the City Council approved a chain, a purchase option with Yarco earlier this year on that particular development. They are still awaiting to hear if they have been successful in obtaining those low-income housing credits to make that development work. Another area is new business recruitment, and we have several things that we do to help move that effort along. Marketing, currently right now, the city is looking at, we will be hiring a photographer this summer to take some updated photos of North Kansas City. A lot of the photos that we had taken were from 2014 and needed a little bit of refresh. We've had a few new businesses come in. We've had some new infrastructure go in, and we would like to get some more promotional photos. So that will be occurring this summer. And again, kind of going back to the opportunity zone, now that we have some better clarification through the release in April, we're better able to market North Kansas City as an opportunity zone now that we have an understanding of what all it means and who all it qualifies. One of the other things that we're chatting about is with North Kansas City Business Council is to see if we could get is to see if we could get a speaker to come in and do a little education to our current businesses that are here within North Kansas City so that they can know how to leverage this new tool to their advantage. So that's another thing that we're working on. Location assistance, so, yes.
While we're on the recruitment, is this the next point about recruitment as well, location assistance?
Yes.
Okay, keep going.
Yes. So within the region, we use Lois, which, I'll be honest, was a tool that was much beefier a couple of years ago, it's not as robust as it was a few years ago. There really is kind of a void, that there is not a one point, like a Realtor.com for commercial businesses. It's a very fragmented market. CoStar is probably the largest nationally. Here in the region, they, KC P and L really has done a yeoman's job of trying to get everybody onto Lois. Did you have any questions about that?
Yeah. So about the recruitment piece, there's a, there's a part in the recent memo, and then there's one that was kind of echoed from the previous one, and I've got a highlight here, I'll just read it real quick. It says, "It's important to note that cities do not typically initiate cold calls to businesses in hopes of relocating to the city. Metro communities tend not to initiate contacts in other metro communities and attempt to lure them to their community, due to an understanding that economic development efforts in the metro should focus on creating and growing new jobs in the region, not poaching jobs from one municipality to another with no net gain for the region." And so I read that, and I kind of highlighted it because I think that might be the wrong approach, or the wrong thought process, and what I mean by that is, I don't see poaching as a thing, more asking businesses to expand into North Kansas City. So a prime example of that would be Chicken and Pickle right now, they're being approached by so many cities nationwide, not to move from North Kansas City to their city, but to open another branch or bring a new location there. And so the idea that if we're going to, you know, approach a business to say, "Come to us, we have this to offer," that we would be stealing it from another metro or taking what they had, I just, I don't see that that is, you know, a valid concern. We really should be reaching out to some of these, especially the customer-facing, the resident-facing, and pitching the city to them.
And I, I agree, I think that there is a definite difference between expanding and relocating. I guess when we were writing this, we meant, everybody here reads the paper, the border war is a real thing within this metro, we, we wanted to make sure that that understanding was there, that we, we wouldn't want to steal from our partner and our sister cities within the metro. Now, if a business is looking to franchise or expand, I would be very happy to talk to them.
Absolutely.
But yes, there is definitely a distinction.
Second follow-up with that, is there a specific packet that we have for marketing North Kansas City to, say you are approached by a business, or we hear that, you know, a business is looking to expand or branch out, is there something that we take and give to them specifically?
So if you can see on the slide that we have here, there's, there's an image to the right here that kind of shows our proximity, what is all available within a five-mile radius, and then some of these talking points. I've got a larger, expanded version of this. That is actually one of the things that we're looking to refresh now that we have a better understanding of opportunity zone and some updated photos. We're hoping to do that this summer, is to update, I call it our collateral, to update those items. We do have several ones that I, I will make on the fly and I'll send it digitally, and I try to, when I'm chatting with a business, I really try to tailor it to them. I don't want to maybe produce something that looks like I hand it out to everybody and it's the same product.
Very good.
But on a digital standpoint, yes, I have several different working versions that if, if they were a more manufacturer versus more customer-based, the information I include is going to be different because they're not as interested in these things, but they are very interested in this. So I try to personalize it to my audience.
Good.
Do we, do we have anybody that reaches out to different businesses and things like that, trying to, not steal them, but you know, heavy, expand your business down into North Town, you know? I'm talking about, you know, like a breakfast place, you know? I mean, I've heard, you know, that Big Biscuit wanted to come down here, and I haven't heard any more about that. Has anybody contacted them, or do we have anybody that's out there beating the brush trying to find people, or?
That, that is something that the One North developer is currently doing. You know, he is responsible for bringing in tenants into his redevelopment area, specifically talking about One North. We are frequently approached by businesses that are looking to relocate into North Kansas City. Some of the challenge, again, is space and availability. Everybody kind of wants to be at the same place. If you're, if you're a public-facing building, you want to be on what's considered our main street, you want to be on Armor Road. But we do not have, like I said, we try not to do cold calls, as it were, but if, if a business is looking to expand within North Kansas City, absolutely, we, we do return those calls, and, and sometimes we do have businesses that refer other businesses to us. Some of those numbers on business expansion, those are referrals, that some businesses have been located here, they, they chat up, "North Kansas City is a great place to be," and I will get a note, or somebody will get a note. I know that Mallory often gets phone calls from people looking to locate here, some of the challenges, space.
I want to follow up on that, do we keep metrics on that? Do we keep metrics on who's contacting and how, and what ended up with that situation?
I keep metrics. I have metrics up until January of this year. So I do have some developments that we were in discussions with and it did not come to fruition. Those numbers were not reflected in here, but I do have, I hate to say it, I have a hip note.
Yeah, I was just curious, and we may want to formalize that a little bit more, but sometimes, you know, the success stories are great, but we can learn a lot from those stories that don't pan out, and what does that mean for us? Maybe it's something completely out of our control, but if we could kind of track some of those over the years, then we would know, we would learn some things, I think, from that, that input.
And kind of to the point of outreach, too, I hear all the time, like people come down to our, to visit our house, or we'll take them around North Kansas City, and it's like, "I did not know this place existed, it's great, like, we love it, what you guys have done here," but I wonder if business is the same way, hence the cold calling, the reaching out, because I'm certain if they're looking to expand in Kansas City, Missouri, there's a, there's a list of resources, properties they can look at, but here, if we were reaching out, I think we could attract some of the, you know, some of the heavy hitters around that are looking to expand a little bit.
And I think some of that is going to be pairing opportunity with those, again, I hate to keep going back to our vacancy rate, but I have way more people who want to locate to North Kansas City than I have available properties that meet their needs.
Yeah.
I mean, I have like a working list that when I see a property come back, I'll try to, I'll try to reach back out to that person, but oftentimes, it's a timing issue and they've moved on.
Is there anything about, you know, that we're doing, when a property goes vacant and looks dead, like the subway building down here, I mean, we all know Denim and Diamonds has sat forever, and now there's a large grass patch, right, in the baying crossroads of town, is there anything we're doing to kind of push those along, to kick it forward, to say, "We have such a low vacancy rate, we want more interest here, and there's a grass patch sitting in the middle of the town"? Like, is there anything?
Are you referring to the super block?
No, he's referring-
I'm referring to the crossroads of Swift and Armor.
1900 Swift.
Yeah.
I can tell you that the owner of that property is actively working on that, and they've, they've had discussions with us.
Good.
And it appears to me that's the issue. I mean, if somebody else owns the property, they kind of get to figure out who they want to go there. It's wonderful that people want to come in, but so much of our property is owned by, let's just be frank, a few number of people you can encourage, but you can't force. Yeah, we, we don't have any control over it, and that's like the-
Well, we do have the control, but we don't want to take that control.
Well, I guess, but we-
Encourage the growth to a little more naturally or organically.
But a lot of our referrals come through our partners, and I kind of list out all the partners that we have here. Again, we do have economic developments kind of considered a team sport, not everybody knows everybody, and sometimes your best referrals come from people you're teammates with. So I kind of list out, we have the North Kansas City Business Council, the River North District, Northland Regional Chamber of Commerce, Clay County EDC, Northland Caps, KC ADC, KC Source Link Square One. All of these, it's important to stay connected with all of your partners because you don't know, when somebody says, "I want to move to the Northland," as you know, that's a very large swab of land, and sometimes our, our referrals, the businesses that locate here, it's because one of our partners have referred them to us. You kind of already hit on the cold call parts. Business retention, I'm going to kind of move forward, making sure my time is okay. I did want to touch on the fact that we do have data analytics, and I have several businesses have reached out, so that they have downloaded the information. This is available on our website, and again, it's a partnership thing, it was a little widget that was given to us by KC ADC, and it kind of goes in through our population, our, our tax information. It's a good, it's a good way that people can get information on their own time, not when there's a staff member here or somebody at a desk to answer questions for them. Business retention, this is something that the city, we do not have a formal program that, that works on business retention. We largely rely on the North Kansas City Business Council to help us with this effort. The city of North Kansas City does help fund the business council, and that was kind of identified in here, we represent 17% of their budget, but we really rely on them if they hear of a business or during their conversations with them, if they hear that they're possibly looking or unhappy, for them to refer them to us.
Let me ask a question about the relationship with the business council. Why do we not have a seat on the board of directors with the business council? We're 17% of their salary, why is there no say?
I kind of wish, that is a good question. I wish Rich, so Rich Groves is actually on vacation, he and I chatted about this on Thursday afternoon. I wanted to be able to sit down and have a discussion with him on some of the things that we would be covering, and I do believe that there are some business council, nope. There were some business council, this information was sent out to their board, and I think it's just a matter of, of timing that they weren't able to make it, I didn't give them enough notice that we were going to be discussing this.
That's a discussion we can have.
Yeah, no, I've certainly wondered.
It's a reasonable question, and it is a large level of support that we provide. Yep.
Thank you.
Follow-up question on that. I know, do we get a report every year on the business council and their high-level budget and what they use our money for?
That's something that we actually put into our contract for services this last year, I'm not sure if the council remembers, but we actually previously didn't have a contract for services, and that's something that we, we started this last year.
So they will be providing that to us later in the year?
Well, I think for something for economic development, I mean, for, as a partial, we need to rely on our business council and have strong leadership and strong direction on the business council.
They did give us a list last year, didn't they? I think they gave us a list.
They did, but they, yeah, we, we did lay out in the contract that we had, that they would come to, once you provide you more details, so.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of, another thing that business operations, economic development, is definitely the surgeons and focus on entrepreneurship. North Kansas City, we're very fortunate to have I-Works and Design Works here within North Kansas City, two business incubators, and they've been very successful because they're not only a coworking space, but they actually offer support structure, and that's through Encore 45, that is the management company that helps assist that function. It connects businesses with resources, as you know. When businesses and entrepreneurs begin, there's a lot more that they don't know than they do, and sometimes you don't even know to ask the questions. So those are some of the services that are performed within I-Works. They have hosted an expo, which city staff did participate in, it was called Growth With Within, myself and TJ Berry with Clay County Economic Development, we presented at that particular conference, and we talked about entrepreneurship and how to support that ecosystem. Another thing, when you're talking about economic development, you have to talk about housing, housing is part of that discussion. As previously noted, we held a work session that talked about affordable housing within North Kansas City and housing options. North Kansas City was part of a coalition and was awarded a NLC grant to look at housing through economic development. The NLC group was very impressed with the Mid-America Regional Council's bid because they tied those two together. You cannot have economic development without talking about where are people going to live that are going to help contribute to economic development efforts. So that summit is coming up on Friday, July 19th, and there are several people that are going to speak to this. Right now, they are doing a technical analysis of the Kansas City region, our affordable housing, and how it can either be a help or a hindrance to our economic development efforts within the region. I guess I'll put in my plug right now, if, if any of the council wants to attend this, please let me know, we are on the steering committee for this effort. Tourism is another area for economic development, and we did discuss this just a couple weeks ago. As it's kind of mentioned, we would like to have more people discover North Kansas City. Are you seeing something?
Council member DeLong is looking great in that picture.
There, to the left with his children.
That is part of our tourism effort.
Don't put him out there, he might just turn, might cause businesses not to come.
We could, we could have just cropped that a little bit.
As previously noted, North Kansas City is really getting a reputation as a place to not only live and work, but to have a fun time, to come out and play. So we have, over this last year, really put some effort into marketing North Kansas City as a visitor attraction. One of that is, and I'm not sure if everybody has seen our, our new website, the Explore NK C website, this is a partnership program that we entered into, the city council authorized the funding of this in partnership with North Kansas City Business Council. The website is live, and we are working right now on our marketing plan of how we are going to roll this asset out and brand North Kansas City on the Explore NK C. This includes inviting businesses to co-brand with us with this, and this way, people can know where to live, work, and play within North Kansas City, where to park, maybe if they are visiting one area, they are coming to Paul and Jack's, "Hey, did you know that around the corner here's three more places for you to visit?" We are a member of Visit KC, and we do have a profile link with on the Visit KC, and we are included in their marketing material as they advertise Kansas City to the greater region, and just, just a couple of weeks ago, we chatted about supporting the Second Saturday movement in the next upcoming fiscal year. So this is an area that we're seeing a lot of growth potential, again, not only to market North Kansas City businesses, for people to patron, but we're hoping that while they're here, they may discover this is a great place to live, and maybe make their next housing choice here.
One question on that.
Yes.
Are we also paying into Clay County for tourism? Because I'm seeing them popping up on a lot more of their ads and a lot more of their posts.
Actually, the business council is part of that, so if you see it on the Clay County Tourism website, you are seeing the business council, they sit on that board.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So we will talk a little bit about kind of upcoming considerations. We kind of feel like we've kind of data dumped on you a little bit today, trying to give you a ramp up of where we are on this effort. The Clay County Economic Development Council, TJ Berry is here tonight, they are going through their strategic planning initiative, and they invite you on Wednesday, June 26th to I-Works, they will be holding a discussion on entrepreneurship. And if the city council is inclined to pursue a business retention program, again, TJ Berry, if you would like him to come up and talk about his strategic planning process and some of the things that they're identifying as a way that they can better support businesses in Clay County.
I'd certainly like to hear.
Please do.
Council, thank you very much for the opportunity. You've talked about a lot of things tonight that are absolutely fantastic, and most of the items, you're hitting it on all cylinders, you should be proud of yourself. I ask people regularly, define for me in one word what economic development is. The presentation really nailed most of the words that come up. Tourism, housing, attraction, retention, entrepreneurism, those are all things that come out when I say those things, but the number one word is jobs. And jobs are in all of those different words. And how do we make sure within North Kansas City, within Clay County, within our region, that we are creating more jobs at a faster rate than other areas? Looking at that, it's really tough to define, but isn't it easier to sell to people that you already know? Isn't it easier to spend more effort on the people that are already in your community? Or the people that want to start businesses in your community? Or the people that want to start businesses in your community? But we don't. We don't do it at all. And I'm speaking, I'll speak for the county, or I can speak for the state in my previous role. I talked to former Director of Economic Development, David Kerr. And I said, "David, why don't we spend more money on what we already have or in what we can create ourselves?" And his answer to me was, "Well, that stuff's going to happen anyway. So, why are we going to spend effort there?" Let me tell you a secret. Seventy-five percent of all businesses that start this year are going to fail within five years. Okay? What would have happened, what would North Kansas City look like if Cerner had failed? Would it be different? Sure it would. What would have happened if a, a second company that was in a complementary industry had succeeded rather than failed? There's some data out there that says if you get an incubator, an accelerator, a mentorship group, and you help businesses at that starting critical time, your failure rate goes from seventy-five percent down to about fifty-eight percent. And I have another hypothesis, I'll say this. What happens if you help those businesses, you curate them just a little bit, help them with minor dollars, tiny dollars, five hundred dollars in accelerated marketing? Would you help them grow faster and your success rate go up? Now, that's a hypothesis. I have no data to support that. But I've started and owned four businesses myself. I sort of know the chairs that those people sit in and the problems that they have. When I started the position a year ago at Clay County Economic Development, I want the biggest bang for the buck. And when we're talking about attraction to the area, attraction to the area, if it's a franchise or if it's a new business, that's fantastic. But if you want to attract the USDA, let's take that for instance. Let's say we want the USDA in Clay County, Missouri, in North Kansas City. Do you have an opportunity for that? What's your percent chance opportunity for that? Zero, okay? Why? We don't have a single building in Clay County that meets the requirements of that bid. We've lost two other opportunities that were coming to Kansas City that couldn't find the real estate quickly enough, and they went to North Carolina. Why do people come to Kansas City? Maybe they're part of a cluster, maybe distribution, geographic location. But we don't have mountains. We don't have beaches. Our climate is up and down. So, a lot of places tick off the list before they ever get to Missouri. If you screen out our largest employers and you screen out the ones that have to be here, our government, our hospitals, our schools, those are all large employers. If you screen those out and you look at the, what's left, a huge percentage of those businesses started here, grew here, stayed here. If that's been our past, I would think that there's a good chance that that's our future. So, rather than play in the game that I can't control at all, building buildings or, or getting in that area, I decided to move the EDC to, how do I make sure that the businesses that are here, we find the problems before they become acute? We help them with those problems, if they're existing businesses, and make it through. Second, if they're starting businesses, how do we surround them with enough wisdom so they don't make the mistakes? Two reasons businesses fail at startup level. Lack of capital, lack of planning. There's an old adage that says, failing to plan is planning to fail, okay? Lots of people that start businesses just jump into it and start swimming. Unfortunately, with, proof's not, not real good that you're going to be successful. How do we do it better? So, the two things the EDC did, we have a twelve-question questionnaire that we've been going out to businesses and asking them, "Do you have a problem with the city? Do you have a problem with the state or the county that can be solved?" We've found problems. One was a simple one. We were up in Liberty and talking to a business, and they said, "The road coming into our driveway, there's potholes in the road, and the trucks that are coming in are having more difficulty." I picked up the phone. I called the City of Liberty, Kurt Winston, and do you know how long it took them to get that fixed? One day. He didn't know there was a problem. And we've got to do a better job of uncovering problems because the last thing that anyone wants is for a business to say, you know, "Yeah, North, North Kansas City's great, Liberty's great, but, boy, some of the problems I've been having, maybe the grass is greener on the other side of the state." And we don't want that. So, it's the, some of the parts that we're focusing on and trying to build the plan to make it very impactful. Do you have any questions of me? I will tell you, the growth in the last, since twenty thirteen county, we've had six-point-six percent population growth in the county, which is major. In the last twenty years, if you are a longtime Kansas City people, would have you ever believed that Kansas City downtown would have thirty thousand people living in it? My first job was at Ninth and Locust, right across the heart of America Bridge, where the federal courthouse is now. And I used to stand on the eighth floor and look out that, and at night, we would walk out. There was nobody there, okay? What happens to North Kansas City if you start, you're already starting some fairly large apartments that are going to be, from what I've looked at, fairly high-class? And your population goes from your forty-four-hundred to, let's say, ten thousand. What kind of things would that create for you? And what would it create for your current businesses that are here that are industrial-based? So, those are some of the things that I, I wonder, is that in store for your future? I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
No, I've just had some comments, but we're short on time.
There's no, you can continue past seven if you feel like-
Okay. All right. So, just, I, I asked for this to be on the agenda, so I had a few thoughts to share. So, I read through the, the memo that we were got, that we got and then the one before, and I went through and highlighted the number of times Assistant City Administrator comes up with, for duties related to economic development. It says Assistant City Administrator is liaison for searches that come through KC ADC. Assistant City Administrator is an appointed person for incentives that are approved by city council. Economic development-specific advertising handled by the Assistant City Administrator. Kim, it sounds like you're doing a lot of the work already with this, and, and you're doing a great job. My thought on some of those three options that we've been presented with, we have staff person handle it, we've got, could we contract it out, or can we form an EDC? Personally, there, there's, there looks like there's a gap right now. When you talked about, what does economic development mean? It means something different to everybody. We have a Business Council that seems really to focus and serve well the industrial sector. And the evidence that, that there's some gap can be shown by River North's membership, local businesses and restaurants being willing to put up a membership fee to participate in a business league because their interests need to be served. There seems to be a gap in the resident focus. So, with, with the population growing, with apartments coming in, with new development, we really need to look at, what can we do for residents who live here, who have made their homes here, who are the, you know, pay property taxes here? And I've got a, you know, a couple quotes in emails that came through on the bike lanes. One is from, they're actually both from large property owners. One says, "North Kansas City's industrial district is not, not in capital, in all caps, not going to turn into crossroads anytime soon. Why would we risk destabilizing the industrial district for such a small minority of people?" Secondly, "We must not forget that in Kansas, North Kansas City's an industrial community and has been that way for a century. It's an import, it is important to embrace North Kansas City's history. We cannot turn it into something it's not intended to be." Those words are troubling.
Yes, but let me say something.
Sure.
You know, the citizens of North Kansas City have to understand that North Kansas City could not exist without all these businesses. I got a thing the other day where Ingredion pays a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars just in sewer taxes. You know, they more or less pay for our sewer system. These big companies that have all this, that does the work, they support this city. And a little bit that me as a citizen, my taxes and everything else, couldn't keep these doors open half a day. So, we have to have our industry down there. We have to have them, or we're going to go under.
Absolutely. And I don't think it's mutually exclusive, though. I think we can support them. We've got mechanisms in place to support them. We've got a Business Council that we help fund. I'm more concerned now with what do we do for the residents? You know, we, we have the opportunity here to also serve, you know, form a committee or a council that I believe Kim is well situated to lead. She's got roots into the community, she's got a background in this sort of thing, and work on, you know, what do we do for restaurants and taverns and industry to bring, bring that to North Kansas City?
Actually, as far as the residents, I don't think you can go to any other city and find more that a city is doing than North Kansas City for our residents. I mean, we got daily, daily trash pickup, and ours still is working pretty good, you know? And, you know, we got transportation, we got everything. We got crackerjack, police department, a fire department, and everything else. We don't have a too awful bad here.
And, and we also encourage our citizens to come to the meetings. There's open forums all the time where they have an opportunity to express themselves. In the short time I've been on the Council, there's not been one thing we've done that has impacted the residents that we haven't invited them to share their opinions of. That's one of the reasons why I'm pleased to serve on the Council is because they are open to suggestions. Eric's office is always ready to answer any kind of concern. You know, we have a city council. I think it's important to involve the residents as well, but we are the representatives of the residents, and we do give the residents a lot of opportunity. And I, I, I don't think that there's a big as chasm as, as being made in a lot of these letters and things coming out. I think these are resolvable problems. I think the bike path thing through, you know, the industrial era was probably not the best thought-out idea. That's a really good way to kind of maybe get business and citizens together, find another route. I just, it's just, I think, I agree with the mayor. I think the city's operating well. I think we need to encourage citizens, if they have concerns, to come to the open forums. And we need to encourage them to contact us as city council members and let us represent their interest. And, you know, I, I don't think we need to expand the opinion base, if you will. And I don't mean that to keep anybody out. I think we already have a really good opinion base.
Mr. Mayor?
I just have some, sorry. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to get some clarification from Councilmember Smith because maybe I'm not understanding what you're saying. So, you're saying you want to use economic development to do more things for the residents? Are you talking about, like, getting in businesses that the residents can eat at? I mean, so it's not just residents, it's residents and the surrounding community? So, your point to the economic development is, is not really bike lane-related. It's more about using economic development, not just for industrial businesses, but also for more retail and hospitality type? Is that what I'm understanding?
Right, yeah, I was kind of, I was kind of building to a point that I lost, lost the way there. Yes, to build more of the hospitality, there's a gap. That's, that's the point I was making. Not a gap for the citizens, we're not treated poorly here. We've got a voice, we've got a lot of good things going. The gap is that the industrial group has a lot of support. They have a Business Council to go to. The restaurant, hospitality, arts, entertainment, the tourism focus, and for the residents and for the people who work here, there's not a lot of support there for them. That's, that's partially why River North District was formed, to give them help with marketing, help with getting the name out, bringing hopefully some new stuff into the city. And that, that's the point I was making, the resident facing businesses or the businesses that face the people who come here to work. And I think that we could do more in that, in that spot.
Just as a, you know, it's a quick reminder, we, you did fund, you did actually approve additional funding or indicate that you would like that in the budget for those, those businesses at your very last meeting.
Right, yeah.
Of, additional funding is one way to, I think, to help with that kind of thing.
Well, that's what I was going to bring up. One thing is that we did, we did fund River North, and, you know, if we need to do more, I think that'll take care of our entertainment and arts district. I know we did a resident survey, was it last year?
It was two years ago, and I think it was, this is, it's, it'll be three years next year. So, I do intend to have the Citizen Satisfaction Survey for your consideration in this year's coming proposed budget.
I think a business survey, you know, you've got that as an option on here. I don't think that's for the money that we're going to spend. I don't think it'll be a huge amount, but I think that would be beneficial to know what our business community is thinking. We've got some emails regarding the Bike Master Plan and other things, but, you know, in these quarterly economic development reports, it would be good as well. Me personally, I don't know that we need to form another council, Economic Development Council. I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, looking at someone to help us with our economic development, but, you know, as far as another council, I just, I don't know that we would, can justify it.
I do think that we're going to be working on reporting to you more frequently, probably on a quarterly basis with what metrics we can, we've shown you and that we can develop. And in terms of a business survey, if that's something that you're interested in, that's why we put it in the memo, it's something, if we, we could consider doing that. I, I would say in addition to the Citizen Satisfaction Survey, but it would probably be about in the same neighborhood as far as money, probably in the eighteen, that twenty thousand dollar range in terms of a cost. But it is something that some do and that we could do.
I think it'd be a good idea.
I think Mr. Berry hit on a good area, though. Really need to focus on these entrepreneurs, these small local businesses, and making sure we're propping these up and making sure we're keeping these businesses here and working on expansion.
Agreed. And I'd just like to say thank you to Kim for your presentation. It's been exciting over the last five and a half years that I've been on the Council to see the development of where we were back then to where we are now. So, you, bringing you in and, or Eric bringing you in, gets us to a whole new level, I think. So, thank you, and I appreciate the teamwork that you guys working together and making things happen.
Anybody else?
Move to adjourn then?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?